Okay, if you'll take a seat, please, we'll get started. We want to use all the time we have to hear from the candidates. So, we're going to begin the second half talking for about 10 minutes about what you believe the city can do to mitigate the impact of All Aboard Florida. And Randy, let me start with you, if I may, on that question.
I'm going to -- this is kind of a tricky thing for me. As you know, we've just been waiting for an impact study to be published. And the impact study just came out. And it is supposed to explain the impacts the train has on our community. And we're supposed to respond to it within X number of days. I think it's '75, and I think it's December 2nd or something we're supposed to respond by. The strategy is to do a lot of homework and then respond at a very late time, at the very end, to the report, so that nothing can be changed or nothing can be fooled with in between. So, I really can't talk, I really don't want to talk or explain too much about what's going on. But let me just say that being involved with the Vero Man site, the train goes right through the center of the Vero Man site. And not only the site that exists now, but several sites along the railroad track. And I guess the things that appeal to ancient man and the thing that appealed to people building a railroad are pretty much the same. So, there's a lot of sites along this track. The other side, the other part of this is, so I don't want to really go in on what ways we might be able to mitigate the impact of the train on the Vero site. But one of the things that's behind this, it seems to be, is it's not a passenger train issue. It seems like it's freight is what's going to be happening here because the Panama Canal's growing to be able to handle bigger tankers and the Miami port is being dredged. So, you really have to look at mitigating the effect of a lot of freight trains, not passenger trains. So, you've really got to explain what you want to mitigate and then force the people to be able to mitigate those effects. And whether you can really stop it is hard to understand right now. But the idea would be try to stop it as much as you can, and then if you can't, at least mitigate the impact on the community.
Jay, you were shaking your head. What do you think the city can do to mitigate the impact of All Aboard Florida?
You know, it's a difficult question because this is a group that is regulated at the federal level. So, you know, there's a part of it that you're kind of helpless at. You know, you really realize that, you know, you've got to kind of get together with a group of other cities to really make an impact at the federal level. You know, we're trying to put a message out there that we really don't want this train coming. We're not being very cooperative as far as signing the leases to encourage the train to come. You know, however, this is one of those issues where we've kind of got to put our money on both black and red. You know, it could go either way, and we need to be prepared either way. And so, we're still being rather cordial with the railroad. We're not really burning our bridges and being very irate with them. We're wanting to keep our communication lines open and our options open. We'd like to see, you know, if it does come through, which we hope it doesn't, we'd like to see quiet zones. We'd like to see some engineering there where we don't have a lot of vibration. We'd like to see the impact as minimized as possible. But that's really only our second plan. Our first plan is just to stop it where it's at.
Jack, what's your position on what the city might do?
Well, first, I want to say, just a gut feeling, it seems like the high-speed train, that label is like a smokescreen. That I'm one of those that believe that the issue is freight, it's moving freight. And I've got a relative that engineer type that just finished up doing work on the Panama Canal. He's now involved in the dredging of the Port of Miami. And he told me, "If you've got a house in Vero Beach, need a railroad, near a railroad, sell it." And, you know, it's, to mitigate it is tough. I think this is going to be something where it's not necessarily our local government or city council that's going to stop it, slow it down. I think it's going to be the masses of people. Just, I don't mean protesting in the streets, but just massive letter-writing to every, all the elected representatives you can find in Congress and the state. It just, I get this sense that it's coming, and it's almost impossible to stop it. I'm not a defeatist, but I'm not sure how we get around the legal part of it. They, you know, they own the land. They're not doing anything illegal. They've got the loan glitch that they may or may not get passed. And I guess at our local level, if it's coming, we need to do all we can to soften the blow with, you know, whatever kind of barriers that are needed or, you know, the hardening of the crossings. It just needs a lot of serious discussion. And I don't think we have all the factors yet of the, you know, I read pieces of that 500-page report. And, I mean, there's stuff in there that's, you know, it's going to relieve traffic on Route 95. I mean, there's stuff in there that's laughable. And so, I really, I don't know how to stop it. But I just think if it's coming, then we need to stand up and protect our little piece of God's earth. We've got to protect what we've got.
Okay, thank you, Jack. Brian?
Just a remark before I say anything. There are two members of the High-Speed Rail Commission in here with me. And before I get accused of violating sunshine law -- no, you don't have to leave. Don, you don't have to leave. There is absolutely nothing illegal about me answering the question. A violation of the sunshine law would be if, at the end of what I had to say, I got and got up and went over and discussed it with another one of the members. So, whoever wants to say that I'm violating sunshine law by answering the question, they're incorrect. The violation would be if there were interaction between me and the other members, and there won't be. At any rate, asking All Aboard Florida to do anything, what that really, to mitigate, what that really means is we're going to charge our city taxpayers. We're going to increase the tax burden on our taxpayers. I think that to, if you want to, if you're concerned about stopping All Aboard Florida, which I don't think you're going to do anyway, what you need to do is you need to contract your congressman and have him talk to the Transportation Committee that's going to give them a billion and a half dollars, that's our dollars, to build this. If you want to have anything to do to stop this, what you do is you tell All Aboard Florida, "We know you're coming. Do it safely. Do it with your own money, not ours. And don't violate any existing laws." If we want to mitigate some of the damage, we should talk to the state, we should talk to the federal people and say, "Look, don't change the law, the speed limits, other current rules that they have to, would have to abide by." They're looking for lots of changes and they're looking for lots of federal money. The real concern that I have about All Aboard Florida, and I understand that, you know, people have lots of concerns about the closings and the vibration and the noise. The real concern about, I have about All Aboard Florida is that they've been before the High-Speed Rail Commission and have flat-out lied to us more than once. At the last meeting, a citizen stood up, and when that citizen stood up to speak, to voice her concerns, All Aboard Florida picked up their toys and left. And I think that you have an obligation to listen to the community, to listen to what the people have to say. And they didn't. They got up and left. And at the end of her remarks, he marches back up to the podium, comes back into the room, marches up, and I made a comment about him leaving. They had an obligation to listen to her. And he says, "Well, I was on the phone outside." I said, "Well, you had an obligation to listen to her." "Well, everything she said was wrong." Well, if you were on the phone outside, how can you possibly know that everything she said was wrong? And this guy, All Aboard Florida, has come before us more times and just told us flat-out lies. And then, when you question them, they turn around and they did this to me, and I'm a, I sit on the commission. I had questions for him. He turned around and walked back out. And I think the citizens ought to be real concerned about this. But I think they, if you want to mitigate the damage, we don't need to be telling them to harden the crossings or to do anything extra that will result in the taxpayers paying extra money. What we need to do is we need to contact our congressman, to contact the authorities that regulate the current rules, the current laws. And if we did that, I don't think All Aboard Florida would be here.
Well, let's explore that a little further because I believe I understood the other three candidates to say that you think the quiet zones, hardening the crossings is an appropriate strategy if the train comes through. So, let me start with you, Jay, and get you to elaborate on that, if you will.
Well, I think what we're, you know, I think what I said the last time is that we do have to take a two-pronged strategy. If it, if we can do something to stop the thing, I think that's our first strategy. We've got to do that. I mean, I think everybody agrees that this, there's just not a lot of benefit here for the people in Indian River County, especially Vero Beach. This is not a good thing for us. However, the decision, you know, comes from a much higher place than it, what seems to, for us to be able to weigh in on and make a difference. And if it does come through, then I think we've got to find a way to make sure that it doesn't hurt us, and it really does mitigate a lot of the effects. And when I say effects, we don't want an awful lot of trains coming through. We don't want the high speeds. We certainly don't want all the extra noise. We've just got to find a way to minimize those effects. That's basically where I'm trying to come from, is that unfortunately, we've got to play it both ways.
Right. I'm remembering a story from Garrison Keylor where these folks were studying rural problems in Minnesota. And after touring the state, a guy said, "I don't know what we can do, but we've got to do more." But specifically, are you in favor of the quiet zones? Are you, what kind of speed limit are you considering might be practical that they could accept?
What I like to do is I like to collect information and be ready with an opinion. The problem is, is that when you start to issue an opinion as to what you would accept and what you wouldn't accept, it's almost as if you were telling All Aboard Florida that this is the way to get the vote, to get the person to agree with you. And I'm not willing to do that. I want the details. Just give me the information. I'm not going to tell you whether I'm going to accept it or not because my first strategy is to make sure that that doesn't happen. And until, you know, we get the answer whether it's going to happen or not, I think we've just got to be ready. But I'm not going to be able, I'm not going to tell them what I would accept and what I wouldn't.
Okay. All right, thank you. Randy, the quiet zones, hardening the crossings, what makes sense to you?
I've already have, I've been part of Honeymanusa's group, and I've been really concentrating on the archaeology side of it, not the other areas. We've got bridges and things that are going to be built or rebuilt right in our area. So, I've been concentrating on that and how we might mitigate that. We're described kind of as a donor county. We're giving, we're going to suffer and have expenses while other cities, the major cities, Miami and Orlando, Jacksonville gain. And so, that's the way they're looking at us. And I hope that we can do some mitigation. And we've got some plans with the Vero site about what we might be able to do, but not going to talk about them.
Okay. Jack?
Yeah, I want to bring up one thing about, that concerns me. Of course, we all have the concern about the impact that this high-speed train will have on our, on our city. Because it might sound kind of corny, but when I moved here, Vero Beach struck me as a tale of two cities. You have the beach side, and you add the other side across the lagoon. And then, when I think about this train, all of a sudden, it's going to be a tale of three cities. You're going to have the beach side, you're going to have the other side of the lagoon, up to the tracks, and then you're going to have the tracks west of here. And it's not going to be felt immediately, but I think after a year or so, people's habits and their patterns, if these trains are going to be as frequent as they say, people are going to stop going places. And we're going to start to see a change in the culture of our city of Vero Beach based on that barrier. And it's like a catch-22. Some people talk about slowing the train down. We might be better off if it speeds up because the crossings would be closed for a shorter period of time as it whizzes through. Or if you slow it down too much, then it's going to be a long delay. They'll start closing one crossing at a time. My guess is, right now, the way it's planned, all the crossings will close at the same time. When the train's two miles away, they'd all go wrong. Brian, okay. It's, it would go whizzing, as it would go whizzing through. So, I just, I don't know. Somehow, that message, I think, needs to get to the people that really control this thing is, what is it going to do to this little city? It's really, you talk about quality of life and all that. It's going to change habits, patterns, behaviors. It's certainly going to change what happens on 14th Avenue on a Friday night. It's all going to change. So, that's...
Okay, thank you. Brian, you get the last word on it.
Well, you know, part of the, part of the problem is that I think that we hear exaggerations that fuel fires of discontent, and the exaggerations aren't accurate. Sitting on the High-Speed Rail Commission, I heard testimony that, you know, the bridges will be closed for 14 hours a day and these lengthy closings. Well, I think that if you, if you look at it and you look at the facts, you see that the gate's going to be down for a minute. And if you, if you take 32 trains, and if they came through all at different times, that'd be 32 minutes, not the 14 hours that some would like to exaggerate it out to. And again, you know, some of the citizens that come before us, they're well-meaning. But we had one citizen that came before the commission and said that there's a one-eyed scrub jay that lives up in Sebastian, and it lives on a different side of the tracks than its feeding grounds. This, I mean, this is real. This happened. And if we put this high-speed train through, when this one-eyed scrub jay flies out of its nest, across the railroad tracks to its feeding grounds, it's going to get smacked by the train. And, you know, and I don't doubt for a second the well-meaning intention of people that make some of these, but the exaggerations are beyond the pale. And they just fuel fires of discontent, and they just don't want the railroad. Well, as a member of the High-Speed Rail Commission, I don't, and I'm not going to say I just don't want the railroad. But what I would like, and Jay's said this, what I would like is some facts. And what I don't want, and we have a high-speed rail man that has entered the room. Anyway, what I don't want is I don't want representatives that think that we aren't entitled to answers. I don't want representatives that think that they can come in and railroad us. I'm not against railroads, but I am against being railroaded, and I think that's what's happening. The constant refrain that this is about freight, well, they could put freight in without any changes at all. They don't need, they don't need any hardening of the crossings. They don't need closed corridors. They don't need this for freight. They need that for the high-speed rail. But I suspect that the high-speed rail element is to get the couple billion dollars, or a billion and a half, or however many dollars they're going to get from the federal government, from the Transportation Committee.
Okay, let's move on to the electric issue so that we have time for that. Thank you each of you for your answers on All Aboard Florida. We're going to take a look at the electric issue in three parts. And let me mention all of them right now so that we can kind of frame the conversation. The first question we're going to explore is what, if anything, can the city do at this point to move forward the sale of Vero Electric to Florida Power and Light? The second part, we're going to take a look at what steps, if any, can the city take now to reduce rates? Those are related, but they're not the same question. And then finally, we're going to discuss if the electric system is sold to Florida Power and Light, what vision do you have for the power plant property? So, I'll ask each of those questions again as we come to them. So, let's start with a question. What, if anything, can the city be doing now to move forward the sale of the electric system? Randy, could we start with you?
Sure. When I became a candidate, I, this was obviously one of the issues on the plate. And if you, this is not a slam at the newspapers, but when you read the newspapers, you don't really come away with a complete idea of what's going on. So, over the last three or four months, I've spent time with our utility director here, Tom Richards. I've visited with OUC, the Orlando Utility Commission. I've spent the day with FMPA up in Orlando also, met with their chairman and president and two lawyers, and their executive committee. And I've met with Florida Power and Light a couple of times. I've read most of, I don't know if I've read most, but I've read as many documents I can get my hands on since 1979. And I've come away with an understanding of what's going on. I am not an expert at this by any means. I'm not a lawyer, not a utility person. But I've, but I've gotten a kind of an understanding of what's going on. We obviously are faced with a contract to sell. We're under contract now to sell to Florida Power and Light. And there's a referendum that says the city wants to sell it. So, we, me as a new council member, my obligation is to try to figure out a way to sell this. But I have, in talking to everybody, I can't see a way to do that, a way to move forward at this time. One, because of our inability to get out of FMPA, which is an organization that we helped form in 1979. And when we formed it, we said we couldn't get out. We all would hold hands and stay in. And we formed the document saying that. So, for us now to say we'd like to get out is very difficult or exceedingly costly. So, I don't see any way to move forward. There may be a way to move forward, but I don't see any way to move forward at this time. And I think I've looked everywhere and talked to everybody, but there may be some solution out there. None of the people I talked to had a solution, so I don't see one right this second.
Okay, thank you, Randy. Jack?
As a matter of fact, what Randy just ended on, I've even asked some of the people when I'm out on the street asking, they always ask me how I'm going to sell the plant or how I would get rid of it. And I tell them, "See, I need some help. Would you tell me how you would do it?" And I get as many answers out of them as I get out of myself. It's a difficult issue. And I take the view that the amount of time that it took to find an interested buyer, Florida Power and Light, and the city has demonstrated through their, through the last three or four years, that we're interested in selling it. We're an interested seller. We are saddled with two power provider contracts with OUC and FMPA. And we were proceeding down a path that was taking a lot of time and a lot of boats. But the four parties were interacting. And right now, it's been stalled because of the strength of the language in those contracts. And Florida Power and Light didn't say that, "Hey, we're not going to, we're not interested anymore." They're just, they're, to me, they're taking a pause. They're thinking about it. And I don't want to be involved, wouldn't want to be involved in anything that would not give them their chance to come back. And, you know, maybe they have a different angle. They've got, we've got a legitimate sales agreement with them that's valid until December of 2016. And some people advocate, "Well, let's sue the FMPA." Well, that could complicate matters even worse. And we could even wind up, I'm not a lawyer, and I don't know the details of it, but common sense tells me that if the city does anything to cause a problem with the window, purchase window, that Florida Power and Light has been afforded up until December of 2016, they in fact could sue us. And I think it could get very complicated. So, that's my long-winded way of saying, I think we need to see what next steps are from Florida Power and Light, what they want to do.
Okay. Brian?
Quick question, Randy or Jack. Either one of you read this book? No. One of the...
I have an autographed, I have an autographed copy.
Did you read it, though, was the question?
From you, Bill.
And the, if you want to know about the contracts, there's a book out by Chris O'Brien. And you should read it because you'll find out some things about the contracts that other candidates think were bound by. As far as FPNL suing us, the, when we started down this path, we both agreed to a number, was it four or five million?
Five.
Jay, five million? Five million? That we agreed to if somebody breaks. So, there's a, there's a built-in clause in there if you walk away. But what can we do right now? We're being sued by Indian River Shores. We're being sued by the, by the county. They're going before the Public Service Commission. We know, because we have an offer from FPNL, we know what the utility is worth, roughly $200 million. We know that Indian River Shores is worth, is about 10%. To settle the lawsuit, we should say to Indian River Shores, "You're 10% of the utility. 10% of the 200 million is $20 million here. Here's the keys. Give them their portion of the utility for the appropriate dollar amount, and then they can go to FPNL or they can go to wherever." And we'd have, we'd be $20 million richer. The underfunded pension plans would be somewhat mitigated. There are ways of doing things, but I think that what we have is we have, again, some county people that are very active in city business. And they want this entire sale for FPL, and they don't care what it costs us taxpayers. I care what it costs the taxpayers of the city of Vero Beach. I'm concerned about that. And I think that we need to open our minds and have some other governing agencies open their wallets and let them have their portion of the utility. I think that the city of Vero Beach could operate a utility successfully, profitably, without the county customers, without customers outside our corporate limits. I think it's possible. As far as the, what do people really want? I don't think they care who owns the electric. I think they could care less. What they want is low rates. And I know that in 2010, I served on the city council with Jay, and we knocked the rates down.
Well, let me ask you, if the city had a utility with 40% of the customers that it has now, and is still saddled with the FMPA contracts, could you operate that smaller utility in a way that brings down rates?
Well, you're putting a lot of ifs in there. Do I think that the city could find a way to operate the utility with just serving the people within the corporate limits? The answer to that question is yes.
Okay. Jay, what should the city be doing, or could the city be doing, to move the sale forward?
Okay, yeah, I'm shifting gears back to your original question. You know, the problem that the sale has right now, there's actually several of them, and a lot of the minor ones, I don't think has really even gotten out to the... a lot of the minor ones, I don't think has really even gotten out to the public just yet. But the big problem was Orlando Utilities Commission. They would, originally, had said that they would take the FMPA entitlements. And I believe there was a dollar amount associated with it, as well as our natural gas contracts. Of course, then the other issues were the all requirements project. All of a sudden, we had a dollar amount that started coming. FPNL was obligated to take the unforeseen costs, and when those dollar amounts came in, FPNL just reneged on it. They just said, well, we'll split the difference with you. You know, FPNL was supposed to pay that cost, it was in the contract. So they just, so FPNL has to pony up an extra 23, 26 million, I believe, for that portion of it. In order to satisfy the bond requirements for FMPA, you have to find somebody else to step into our shoes to buy those power supply contracts. That was OUC. It's no, you know, OUC is now backed out of it. They've, they sent a nice letter to us and says, I'm sorry, due to some of our other bonding contracts, this is in conflict with what our bond trustee says, so we cannot take these contracts. So what happens is now we have the FMPA entitlements, and we cannot find some, somebody else to take those entitlements. The problem is, is now that the whole power industry has shifted away from coal and is now moving towards natural gas, these entitlements are now worth quite a bit less, and you've got to pay money to get rid of them. In fact, at a council meeting today, you know, one of our attorneys said, you know, there's a possibility this thing is, you know, you got to pay maybe $350 million to get rid of it. You know, that's way out of the league of what FPNL can even come up with. You know, the idea of suing FMPA, you know, when I talked with FMPA, their lawyers said, you know, the moment that you sue FMPA, FMPA ceases and stops all activity in helping Vero Beach get out of their entitlements. Once you set up that adversarial relationship, you will not have the help from FMPA. So any action moving forward on trying to get this sale happen ceases immediately. You still have the contingent liabilities. You know, the best way to say contingent liability is when Progress sold to Duke, and then Duke Energy found out that there's some cracks in a nuclear reactor in Crystal River, you know, a tremendous amount of money that they had to come up with. That's a contingent liability. FPNL said they're not going to take the contingent liability. I don't think, you know, everybody understood that FMPA wasn't taking those contingent liabilities, so guess who was going to take it? You were going to take it. So if anything happened further on down the line with that nuclear power plant, that was, that was going to be something that you're going to have to pay for. Now, there's an awful lot of little issues in there, but in order to move it forward, we have got to solve all these little issues. And this is going to take years and years to do, assuming that we have help, and assuming that we have somebody that wants to buy these power entitlements that really are out of the market right now. So it's no surprise to me that here we are, I guess, a lot of people say we're seven years into this. You know, seven years into this, a lot of FMPA members have just flat said, no, we're not interested in voting on this, we're not interested in taking the power entitlements. It's a dead duck. So, you know, really, our best option at this point is to just get the rates down. You know, stop feeding the lawyers, let's just get the rates down.
All right, well, let's shift the conversation to that subject, what the city could do to lower rates. Randy?
I think there are three things. One, we've already gone through a whole, the Finance Commission, Peter Gori, has come up with about 15 or 20, I'm not sure of the exact number, of ways that the commission suggested we could lower rates. Each one was small, but a number of ways, we've investigated those. There's another way of mothballing the plant. The plant we've got, if we mothballed it and kept it, but just closed it down, it would probably save $3 million. That savings we could, would translate into lowering the rates down. And then talking to OUC, who is a supplier of 60% of our, of our energy right now, I think those are the three ways to lower rates.
Okay. Jack?
I think the, right now, the key would be working with OUC to alter their contracts, especially the reserve power that we buy. I know that the city manager is at the moment in discussions with them. And at the moment, to me, that seems to be the only key to get the rates down, would be altering that contract with OUC.
Okay, thank you. Brian, lowering rates. What can the city do to lower rates? Or can it do anything to lower rates?
Sure, it can do things. And we had lower rates back when I was in council in 2010. The rates have gone up, but one of the things, when the OUC contract was developed, one of the, one of the principles was that we were guaranteed by OUC to have the lowest rate of anybody. Nobody else was going to get a lower rate. That was the agreement. And if they did, then our rate would go down. But what's happened in those intervening years is that OUC has negotiated a contract with Lake Worth, and they're a lot lower.
Yep.
A lot lower. So we need to enforce the principles of the OUC contract. And, you know, I've watched Jay try to do that and just get stonewalled by other council members. And those are things that exist today that we could do and have lower rates overnight, literally overnight. And I think that OUC has an obligation to live up to their agreements. And that would give us, that would give us FPL rate, or not FPL rates, that would give us the same bulk power rates as Lake Worth, and it would lower our rates substantially.
Okay. Jay, what more could the city do to lower rates?
You know, quite frankly, Brian, I would really like to know if we could find somewhere where it's documented, the most, it's basically a most favored nation clause, where if somebody else can get it lower, then we automatically get it at that lower price. You know, when we did the math on the Lake Worth, you know, we're buying power about $72 a megawatt hour, anywhere from $6 to $72 a megawatt hour from OUC. Lake Worth is getting it about 54, 54 to 56. You know, could you imagine our rates being $20 lower? You know, that would be absolutely wonderful. You know, if you ever find that in written form, we definitely need to have it, and we need to throw it in OUC's face and get that. You know, the other two things, you know, I had mentioned several years ago about taking the power plant off the river, and I can still remember the other council members just laughing at me and telling me, well, that's not possible, and it's not in the contract, and whatnot. But, you know, here we are, now we're talking about it, you know? I remember talking about the Emerson Tie Line, which was something that, you know, I guess I was considered out in left field. But now we're using the Emerson Tie Line, and we can get the power plant off the river, and then we can get a couple of million dollars back into our rates, where rates do come down. You know, it's time to look at the optimization. I don't know if you guys remember or not, but three years ago, we were at that point of doing an optimization. The Utilities Commission recommended it, and a council member said, well, that's just a distraction. You know, they had, they had an FPNL deal to do, and it was a distraction. You know, we could have done optimization three years ago and gotten further ahead. And meanwhile, we've got some FMPA members that are actually lower than FPNL. FPNL was one of the lowest in all 12 of the categories. Today, they're only lowest in one. Well, who else is lowest in the other categories? The FMPA members. You know, by no means am I pushing FMPA. You know, I've got some good people out there, the industry that I talk to, that say, you know, FPNL's got a great wholesale rate, they've got a great wholesale product, you know, and I would love to strike a deal somewhere halfway in between FPNL and say, hey, drop the contract, we go wholesale with you, and let's just call it good. Would that would happen? Probably not. But the point being is that we've got to shift the focus, get the rates down, and stop playing the games.
Okay, thank you, each of you, for your answers to that question. Rather than exploring your views on what might be done with the power plant land, let's move on to a discussion about the water treatment plant, and then your vision for that land, because those two really are connected, I think, if both of those pieces of property became available. So here's the question about the water and sewer utility, specifically the treatment plant. Do you support moving the water treatment plant from the current location? If so, what benefits would the customers of the city's water and sewer utility receive in exchange for the investment of some $20 million? And then if the wastewater treatment plant were moved from its current location, what would be your vision for a future use for that land? Jack, can we start with you?
I'm not a city planner. Anyway, first of all, you ask about selling the, moving the water, I mean, moving the sewer plant off the river.
Right.
I think, at least from what I've been exposed to and some of the studies that I've done, it doesn't seem economically feasible to do it now. It just seems, it could be five years, 10 years from now might be the time to do that. We don't know what the disposition of the electric utility is going to be. I would think that the land we're talking about, you asked what we do with land use?
Right.
First of all, I would do, I'd do nothing. I think in the charter, it reverts back to parkland. And since those parcels would probably come open one at a time, I think it would be wrong to start developing one parcel and then developing the other one later. I would wait till they're both available and then have a development plan for both at the same time. Otherwise, I think it's going to be a mishmash of stuff. But I'm not, I'm not opposed to moving it off, but I think it's, right now is not the time.
Okay. Brian?
I think that we need to, if we're going to move it off, we need to do it incrementally. The water sewer has been hardened since the hurricanes, it withstood the 2004 hurricanes, and it's been hardened since. It's not a danger, like some people that have come up to me, it's not a danger to the lagoon. Incrementally, I think we could get rid of the water sewer treatment plant over there by, with a pump house less the size of this building, and pump it out to the treatment facilities out at the airport. The, to, to take that whole parcel of land, the water sewer and the electric, I'm sure that there'd be tremendous interest by developers that saw lots of dollar signs. But I think that WC Fields was right, and I think the quote, forgive me if I misquote, but I think the quote is something along the lines of, buy land, young man, they aren't making any more of it. And for us to, for us to sell that property on the river, I think would be a tremendous mistake.
So let me ask part of this question again. If the city spends $20 million to move, to build a new facility, and that $20 million presumably is worked into the water and sewer rates, what do you tell the water and sewer customers about the benefit they're receiving in exchange for another $20 million in rates? You follow me? I'm trying to understand that.
I'll follow you. If we're going to move that up there and spend $20 million, then we'd probably sell that property for $20 million and let the developer be very well-known that it's going to be very low density. You know, we're, we're not in the business of making everybody's rates, you know, higher, you know, quite the opposite. You know, if we're going to move that plant up to the airport, it's going to be because we can build a much more efficient plant. You know, who knows down the road? Maybe the, you know, the step system will become wildly accepted, and we'll just naturally have to do that, and we won't have to spend the $20 million, the business will be there. But I think the land, you know, there is much consternation of what's going on. I find it amazing that we talk about the electric issue and it's about privatization and getting government out of the business. And then we look at the water and sewer, and it's bigger government, and government's still in the business. And it's the same crowd that's pushing both issues. I think the land is something that needs to be protected, and I would hate to see high rises come up on something like that.
Someone told me no one would build a high-rise marina near a bridge. But there is a bridge across Riviera to Singer Island where there's a high-rise marina. It's been done at least once before. Randy, your answer to the question about moving the water and sewer, the treatment plant?
I spent time there with Rod, the manager, and we talked about that. And basically, it doesn't make any sense to do it, to move it in the next five or six years because there's still loan payments on the past, on the building of the existing plant. And if it were moved after those loans were extinguished and new loans were taken on, it would save some money. That is, the maintenance facility that's used now in the present location could be combined with the maintenance that's used in the location that's over near the airport. But the total savings would be marginal, and so this would not be a priority in my mind of moving it. I think that it could be on our want list, but I think that if we did a long-range plan, it would fall out as one of those things we wanted to do now.
Okay, thank you. Let's move on now to closing statements from each of you. We'll start with you, Brian, and give each of you three minutes for closing statements. Brian?
I don't need three minutes. You've got three choices, make me one of them.
Okay, Jack, you have five minutes. Thank you, Brian.
You're welcome.
Jack?
Well, you know, I think the decision to run again really was just trying to finish up a lot of these issues that we've got going on out there. You know, there's an awful lot of these little, small issues that we do for our little neighborhoods, and it means a lot to people to treat people on an individual basis and to really go into their neighborhoods and make a difference there. Sometimes, you know, we get caught up in the big issues, but we don't realize that, you know, in people's individual lives, you know, there are things that are very important to people. And we've got to keep a watch on both sides of that. And, you know, specifically, you know, we're working with a lot of parks in the smaller areas, a lot of the improvement districts, you know. I especially want to make sure that this dog park comes through. It's absolutely an amazing thing to watch. But my big thing was to make sure that we could finish a lot of these projects. You know, I'm of that opinion that, you know, hopefully, we can do some good things this next, this next round of, you know, next couple of years. You know, my focus really is going to try to bring the community back together. We've got so much divisiveness out there. It's just maddening to think that, you know, we can't talk to a county person without the doggone electric issue coming up. It just drives you up the wall. You know, everybody wants to compare rates, but it's like, you know, yeah, you'd like to win the lottery too, but I'm sorry, it just, it just doesn't happen all the time. But hopefully, moving in a direction of trying to bring a little peace to our community again. I was always, you know, impressed to think that we were, at one point, the most friendly town in Florida, and I was really impressed by that. And I'm hoping that we can live up to that in the future.
Okay. Randy?
I spent a lot of time going around the city, talking to people, not just door-to-door, but also people within the management of each one of the departments. And it's, in my mind, it's a very well-run city, and I'm really excited about the chance of possibly getting involved in it. And there's an awful lot of smart people here, and lots of talented people that are citizens that want to help. There's a lot of energy in the city that want to step up and do things. And bringing those together and making it what we want to do would be fun to be part of. So I'd very much like to be part of the council and look forward to it, if possible.
Thank you, Randy. Jack, the last word is yours.
Oh, five minutes? Thank you. No. My interest is to see the city, kind of parallel to what Jay is just saying, that, right or wrong, we've had, the people I've talked to out on the street, some people are kind of staying away from interest in our local government. And it's not a criticism, but we've been like a one-issue town, a one-issue council. And it just dominates, meeting after meeting, and there are certain people that are regulars at those meetings. And I think there's a lot out in the city that needs to be done. And I think I'd like to see a more calm pace in City Hall, and I think that I'd like to see issues bubble up from the community and be able to tackle some of the things I think that have just been held in advance because people are just kind of turned off right now. And I think that all of us have something to offer.
Well, I thank each of you gentlemen for joining us this evening. I want to remind everyone that all seven candidates were invited to be with us this evening. Especially thank... Especially thank you for taking the time for a two-hour conversation, which I hope will be helpful to those who are here this evening and to those who will be able to watch this on Channel 10 Television. The video will also be posted on InsideVero.com. I thank each of you who came out this evening to participate. I want to thank Sally and Wayne Dillon from Ideaguard and Advertising, and Justo from Channel 10.[1788.32][1788.32](Applause). Thank you.